Okay, we're live.
Thank you. We are live. It is 6:03 on October 22nd for a special meeting of the governing body to take on some land use cases. Calling the meeting to order and we will begin with the pledge of allegiance led by councillor Lindell, a salute to the New Mexico flag led by councillor Garcia, and then an invocation from councillor Romero Worth followed by any remembrances people would like to bring to the community. Thank you. If we'll all rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I salute the flag of the state of New Mexico and the Zia symbol of perfect friendship amongst united cultures.
If we could all bow our heads, I'd ask that we take a moment for reflection, to think about those struggling in our community. Let us think particularly of those impacted economically by the pandemic and all who are bearing the physical and emotional toll of the virus. I'd like to ask that we also summon the wisdom to govern with a sense of welfare and the true needs of the people, that we summon a sense of justice and rightness as we balance the competing interests before us. Let us have confidence in our ability to work together even when there is honest disagreement. And finally, let us summon humbleness in the roles we play as elected officials with an ability to help our community through these difficult times. And if I, if there are remembrances, I, I think this is the moment councillor Rivera.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you councillor woman Romero Worth. I'd like to just remember a couple of friends and past city employees, firefighters. The first one is Peter Duran, who was a fire chief here in the city. He helped usher in a 100% professional fire department. It's, he was really a leader at the time in, in bringing a professional fire department into a city where most places were still using combination fire departments and he really ushered it in and did a great job and is really, was one of the foundations of really creating the, the strong fire service that we have right now. So he'll always be remembered by me and I think the fire service is, is being that, that type of leader. So if we can remember him and then also David Gomez, who was a fire engineer with the fire department. He was a medic as well as a firefighter. So one of those great individuals that just gave his 20 plus years to the fire department serving this community. So if we can remember both of them right now, that would be great. And just my heartfelt wishes to both of those families. Had they died, had they passed away without being in a COVID situation, they would have been given full fire department honors, which if you've ever seen a service, it's, it's heartfelt. So I'm sad that they won't be able to have that, at least right now. Thank you.
Thank you councillor. Others? Let's think about those two individuals and then as councillor Romero Worth said, those in our community who were suffering. We suffered several fatalities this week from COVID, people we remember and think of in our hearts and carry their families with us. Let's just take a minute. Thank you, everybody. So with that, could the clerk please call the roll?
Yes, Mayor Weber.
Present.
Councillor Beto.
Here.
Councillor Cassidy Sanchez.
Here.
Councillor Garcia.
Present.
Councillor Lindell.
Here.
Councillor Rivera.
Here.
Romero Worth.
Here.
Councillor Vila Coppler.
Here.
Councillor Villarreal.
Present.
You do have a corn present, Mayor.
Thank you. Now you have an adjustment to the agenda, Madam Clerk.
Yes, sir. I would like to remove item 8A and this is the item dealing with allied universal security. This will be on our October 28th agenda.
Okay. So with that change, is there a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
Move to approve amended.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Could the clerk please call the roll?
Yes, and the motion was by councillor Vila Coppler and the-
Yes, it was.
For Lindell.
Correct.
Thank you. Councillor Beto.
Yes.
Councillor Cassidy Sanchez.
Yes.
Councillor Garcia.
Yes.
Councillor Lindell.
Yes.
Councillor Rivera.
Yes.
Councillor Romero Worth.
Yes.
Councillor Vila Coppler.
Yes.
Councillor Villarreal.
Yes.
Mayor Weber.
Yes.
Thank you. The motion has been approved.
Thank you. We have then with the removal of that item eight, we have item seven, which is public hearings. And if you would introduce 7A for us, please.
Yes, sir. This is consideration of bill number 2020-29. It's case 2020-2267. It's 719, 721, 723, and 723 and a half Don Diego. This is the Castillo compound zoning ordinance amended. Amendment. Celia and Albino Castillo owners request an amendment to ordinance number 1998-4 to allow building additions, to allow two additional commercial uses, and to clarify and align various other conditions of approval with the development plan approved in 1998. Proposed development plan, which is 2020-2268. The properties are approximately 0.40 acres and our zone C1 PUD, which is office and related commercial. This was ordinance 1998-4. And we have Carlos Kimora presenting.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I would like to recuse myself from this item. I worked with Judge Celia Castillo and she and Al are good friends of mine, as well as her sister is my very best friend. So I believe I need to recuse in case there's any thought of impropriety.
Thank you for that. I, you, you know, you, you were anticipating my next process instruction, which is we're going through the public hearing process, which begins with members of the governing body disclosing ex parte communications or recusing themselves. And thank you for, for being very candid and upfront about that. So we'll start with that. I, I'll just go through this very quickly so everybody who's listening or watching understands our process. The order of the hearing is we'll have a presentation of a staff report, probably in the neighborhood of five to 10 minutes. We'll then ask the applicant to make a presentation of 10 or 15 minutes at the most. Members of the public may testify at that time for two minutes per person. The governing body can ask questions of the staff or of applicants, after which we will then close the public hearing for any further input and simply go to deliberations by the governing body with a motion, second, and discussion, and finally a vote. So councillor Vila Coppler has already indicated she needs to recuse herself from this item. Is there anybody else on the governing body who believes that there is a reason why they need to disclose either ex parte communication or, as the councillor already did, a reason not to participate in this hearing? Okay, if that's clear, then let's begin with the presentation of the staff report. We'll try to keep it within 10 minutes. If you can do that, please. And I think this is, yeah, Carlos, you have the screen.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor and members of the governing body. And thank you, Madam Clerk, for reading out the caption. So the Castillo compound, 719, 721, 723, and 723 and a half. This will be a zoning ordinance amending some of the C1 PUD zoning conditions, 1998-4. To give you some context, subject property is 0.4 acres located off Don Diego and near Sarrios Road. Surrounding it to the north is mostly BCD and general commercial properties. To the south is medium and high density residential, which is around 21 dwelling units per acre. And over to the east is the historic district. And again, I do want to reference that this subject property is not actually within the historic district. It is right along it though. To the background, in 1984, the property was zoned from what was then R21, a residential medium high density zone, to C1 PUD, which is a light commercial and office area. Nothing really happened between 84 and 98. In 1998, the property came back before the city and the zoning was renewed. The applicant grouped with their neighborhood association and placed 15 conditions on the zoning ordinance. Those conditions included things like preservation of building footprints, no second stories, maintaining low walls and vegetation along a lot of the property lines, and maintaining their existing landscaping. In 1999, the very next year, the applicant, the neighborhood association, and the planning commission agreed on a development plan, which for the most part disregarded a lot of the, the governing body's zoning ordinance conditions and created a different plan, a plan that, that did not necessarily comply with all the zoning ordinance conditions. Fast forward to 2020, the applicant came forward and asked for an expansion to their, some of their residential properties. We had to first take this to the planning commission and now to the governing body. At the planning commission, they revised the development plan and recommended a simplified, a much more simplified zoning ordinance amendment. And that's what we have for you tonight. The two main questions that we have for the governing body is, one, what should be reviewed by the governing body through things like zoning ordinances versus the planning commission through things like the development plan? And the second main question is what kinds of zoning conditions are consistent with surrounding uses? To get to the first question, right now, the zoning ordinance requires that the governing body reviews changes to allowable uses, which is relatively standard, changes to the existing architectural style, which is a little less common, for all additions, whether that's residential, commercial of any size, that should come to the governing body. Second story, changes in existing landscaping, changes in the parking lot material, changes to walls and fences, preservation of a garage and a storage building, and the construction of an emergency access gate. When we took this to the planning commission, the planning commission agreed with staff that most of these conditions can actually be placed on the planning commission development plan rather than being on the zoning ordinance. And so the planning commission either addressed or dismissed some of the, the things that were, were previously in the zoning ordinance and really simplified the, recommended a simplified zoning ordinance that really just focuses on changes to allowable uses and any changes that would be outside of the existing architectural style. And getting to the second question, which is what is consistent with surrounding zones? Again, to the north is commercial zoning. In the commercial zoning, you're usually allowed three to four stories, eight foot high walls. Most of the commercial uses are permitted and a lot of the additions require a simple development plan. To the south, the residential areas, a lot of it allows two to three stories, six foot high walls, and a lot of additions can go straight for building permits. The existing C1 PUD zoning, however, only allows one story, has a requirement for low walls, although it's not specified what those should be or where those should be, only allows one commercial use, which is an office space, and additions currently are requiring a rezoning request. The proposal would make it so that the C1 PUD would be allowed two stories, would be allowed six foot high walls, would allow three instead of one commercial use, and then additions would all go through the planning commission rather than, than the governing body. And I do want to note that the, all of the requests within the C1 PUD are all consistent and compliant with general C1 zoning and are still more restrictive than general C1 zoning. This is a list of all the different conditions that the, the ordinance previously had. The red ones, four through 15, are the ones that the planning commission and staff have recommended getting rid of. So we don't actually need to look too closely at this. We'll always come back to this and talk about details if you want. The, the central element is that the, the proposal now really narrows the zoning ordinance down to three main conditions. The first condition is limiting uses. So you're already allowed a lot of residential uses. In this case, it would be limiting the commercial uses to three, basically arts and crafts and galleries type, type uses, restaurants with fast service, takeout, but no drive-through or drive-up, and then maintaining the business and professional offices. The second condition is just that additions are allowed, but it has to comply with existing architectural styles. And the third condition is just that residential and commercial uses have to comply with applicable regulations. So it really shrinks, the proposal is, is really quite shrinking down the zoning ordinance. In summary, chapter 14 doesn't have a specific criteria for changing zoning ordinance conditions. We recommend that the governing body make a decision on whether or not the proposal will harm or serve the overall public interest and whether infrastructure can handle proposed developments. Our recommendation, the recommendation of the governing body is that, that the changes made to the zoning ordinance are not, are not drastic changes that are inconsistent with, with surrounding zoning and C1 zoning. And that's our recommendations, the governing body approve the request to modify and delete conditions within the existing zoning ordinance. And with that, I'll stand for questions.
Thank you. We'll come to questions later, but that was excellent. And thank you for the clarity and brevity of your presentation. Let's turn to the applicant now. And I believe the applicant needs to be sworn in and then we'll offer the applicant 10 to 15 minutes to present their case before the governing body.
Thank you. I'm going to swear you in, please. Under penalty of perjury, do you swear that the testimony you're about to give is the truth? The whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Thank you both. You both have the floor now.
Okay, good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. I'm Celia Castillo and with me is my husband, Al Castillo, and on Zoom is architect Subi Bowden. Al and I are the owners of the Don Diego property and we've owned it since the mid 70s. Before we get into the details of the project, we want to thank you all for your tireless work for the city of Santa Fe. We appreciate your having tonight's special meeting to consider this ordinance. Santa Fe is a special place and your hard work makes sure it stays that way. Thank you very much. Next, we would like to introduce our daughter, son-in-law, and granddaughter, Felisa Clark and Eleanor. They're also on, on Zoom. We're very excited that they want to move to Santa Fe. We need young, professional families here and they're basically the main reason that we're pursuing the changes to this property. Now, on to the project. We think that Carlos has done a great job in explaining it, so we're going to keep it short and just hit the highlights. I'm going to get into some slides here.
Are you set up to share the screen? Have we got, got them enabled to do that?
It looks like I can. If I can't, that's okay. I just won't.
No, we'll, we just have to set it up so you're able.
Oh, okay.
Noah, are they good to go?
Mayor, councillors, they are good to go. They just have to-
There you go. You're all good.
Wonderful. Okay. Oh, wait. Let me go back. Here we are. Okay. Here's an aerial view and Carlos already gave you-
I think, I'm sorry. I don't mean to interrupt. I think you're on slide seven and you want to be on slide one.
I think so. Let me go. Can you see slide one?
The, the main screen is all blue, which reflects slide seven. You may need to find a way to move your cursor up to the top.
Celia, you may want to start your slideshow. Just go to slide and start show if this is on PowerPoint.
Or listen to Noah because he knows what he's talking about.
Okay. Are you getting it now?
No, ma'am.
You don't. Okay.
So you, maybe you want to stop sharing then and try start sharing again from the slide that you'd like to-
All right. Okay, share screen. Right. No. Okay. I'll tell you what, if I don't get this going, then I'm going to pass.
Celia, I do, I do have some of the questions from the planning commission as well, if you want me to show some of this.
Okay, I was just going to show the picture of the house at 7:20, you know, the, the aerial, sort of like the one you did. Let me try one more time here.
Go ahead. No, no pressure. You're good.
I know what I can do. Let me go back. Okay. Let's see if this works. Do you have slide one?
Yes.
The Castillo compound. Okay, we're good.
Perfect.
All righty. Okay, here's the aerial view of the property. And you can see 719 is the house with the turquoise top. And then 721 is right here in the middle and 723 is the elongated building that's the duplex. And in the 40 years that we've had this, 40 plus years, we've had this property, we've seen a lot of changes. We've seen the rerouting of Don Diego into Guadalupe. You can see that right there. Here's Sarrios. Okay, now we have a Whole Foods to the west and Trotta Park has been developed. The rail yard park has been developed and the surrounding areas and our wonderful farmer's market. In the back, you can see Don Cubero Alley, and this is the demarcation point for the Don Gaspard Historic District. So we're outside of that district. Here's another aerial view, and this is essentially what Carlos talked about. To the, you can see our property right up here. To the south is mostly residential till you get to Court of the Road. And then over here, here's our property. Into the north and west, you get commercial motels, the business district, rail yard park. So we're definitely in a buffer area. Before we get to that, let me just go back here. All right. So that gives you an idea of where the property is and what is around it. During the time that we've owned the property, we've lived here and then we've moved away and then we rented the units and then we modeled them and then we returned to live here again. We rented some units and now it's just the family. And our older daughter lives in 723 and we're hoping that the boat rights can live in 721 and we live in 719. We began this process in January. The planning commission conditionally approved our development plan that would allow us to add onto the buildings at 719 and 721, restore the garage, add a carport, and then add walls around the compound for safety and security. We also looked to the future with the addition of the two commercial uses and the allowance of the two stories. The amended ordinance would allow future construction and additions as long as they're compatible with the architectural styles, the existing architectural styles. These uses must comply with the building, zoning, and parking regulations as applicable and will have to return to the planning commission for changes to a development plan. We visited with several of our neighbors, answered their questions, and for the most part, there were no objections. In fact, in the packet, you have some written support of our project. The packet has much information about the steps we have taken and the meetings held, and I'm not going to go over it all. Carlos has summarized where we are at this point. I think I'm just going to show you the slides of what we have in mind if this is approved. This is what the property looks like now. This is what we'd like to look, it to look like from Don Diego. And then in the back to the left is the existing on Don Cubero, and we want it to look like what's on the right. So that's what we'd like to do. So now, since Carlos has summarized where we are, we ask that you please approve bill 2020-29 and we stand for questions.
Thank you. We're going to open it up now for public comment, public testimony. If there are, Joe, if there are people in the attendee room who wish to speak to this issue, this, as part of this hearing, this is the time for them to come in and be sworn. Is there anyone with a hand up in the attendee area who wishes to speak on this matter?
Mayor, it doesn't look like there's anybody in attendance who wishes to speak.
Okay, in that case, we will not have public testimony. We will, however, allow the governing body time to ask questions of either staff or the applicant at this time. If I see any hands, I will recognize or call on you at this time. Councillor Garcia, you have the floor.
Hi, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. Is now the time to make an appropriate motion?
Not yet. We'll get to that after we close the public hearing.
Okay. No questions for the applicants.
Okay. Are there, are there questions for either staff or the applicants before I close the public hearing? Having completed the testimony part. If there are no questions, then we will close the public hearing and the governing body may now deliberate. You may make comments or if there are no deliberations, we can move to a motion. Councillor Garcia.
I move to approve this request to amend ordinance 1998-4 to modify and delete conditions of approval from the zoning ordinance and to adopt the findings that the planning commission has outlined in section four of the staff report.
Is there a second? I hear a second from councillor Lindell. Is there discussion of the motion? There's no discussion of the motion. Could the clerk please call the roll?
Yes. Councillor Cassidy Sanchez.
Yes.
Councillor Garcia.
Yes.
Councillor Lindell.
Yes.
Councillor Rivera.
Yes.
Councillor Romero Worth.
Yes.
Councillor Villarreal.
Yes.
Councillor Beto.
Yes.
Mayor Weber.
Yes.
Thank you. The motion has been approved.
Thank you.
And we, we'd just like to say something.
Mr. Mayor and members of the governing body, I feel I should pipe in. I'm, I'm a co-owner here. The planning division deserves a great big thank you and I need to single out Carlos Kimora for making this process as clear as he could. And to those who work on these matters that we don't even know about. And we need to thank the planning commission and the governing body, their time and effort in reviewing this project. Thank you all very much.
Thank you. And thanks for bringing such a clear and direct presentation. We're very, very appreciative. Okay, thank you, everybody. Madam Clerk, could you identify the next, the next item on our agenda, please?
Yes, Mayor. So we will be considering three separate items under one case. But, and we will have three separate motions. So the first item is 4262 Aua Fria Street and 4701 and 4702 Aua, excuse me, Rafina Street. First item is case number 2020-2273, which is 4262 Aua Fria Street and 4701 and 4702 Rafina Street. This is an amendment to conditions of approval adopted in case twenty twelve dash one oh four. Liaison Planning Services Inc., agent for Aua, we, Aua Fina Development LLC owner. Request to amend conditions of approval that the governing body imposed in the findings of fact and conclusions of law. For case number twenty twelve dash one oh four, which approved rezoning ordinance twenty thirteen dash twelve. By adopting new findings of fact and conclusions of law. The new findings of fact and conclusions of law would remove the condition that forty-two sixty-two Aua Fria. Must be developed consistent with R three zoning, notwithstanding that it is zoned R five. And the condition that the owner must propose three base course lot access driveways serving eight lots each. The properties are zoned R five, which is residential five dwelling units per acre. And R three residential three dwelling units per acre. In total approximately eleven point four seven acres. The second item is consideration of bill number twenty twenty dash thirty, it's case number twenty twenty dash twenty-two seventy-four. Forty-seven oh one Rafina Street rezoning. And this is an ordinance amending the official zoning map of the city of Santa Fe. And changing the classification from R three, which is residential three dwelling units per acre, to R five. Residential five dwelling units per acre with respect to certain parcel of land comprising approximately three point four four acres. Located at forty-seven oh one Rafina Street. The third item is consideration of bill number twenty twenty dash thirty-one. This is case number twenty twenty dash twenty-two eighty-seven. Forty-seven oh two Rafina Street rezoning. This is an ordinance amending the official zoning map of the city of Santa Fe. And changing the classification from R three residential three dwelling units per acre. To R six residential six dwelling units per acre. With respect to certain parcel of land comprising approximately two point four two acres. This is located at forty-seven oh two Rafina Street. And we have Lee Logston presenting.
Thank you. Uh, welcome back, Counselor Vio Copppler.
Mr. Mayor, can I ask a quick, uh, clarification question?
Absolutely.
So I think, uh, the clerk said that this would require, uh, three motions in the memo. I think it was from Lee says, uh, six motions will be required, two for each case. Can we just clarify that real quick?
Sure. That's a, Lee, do you, can you, uh, explain the difference between three motions and six motions?
Yes, abs, excuse me, absolutely, thank you, Mr. Mayor, um, one motion would be to actually approve. Each of the three cases, so in, you know, the rezoning ordinance amendment, one for the first rezoning. A third for the second rezoning, and then the other three motions are adopting the findings for those individual cases. And we, we split out the findings into three sets because it is three different parcels and, and. Kind of the, the nature and the history of this course, that seemed like the best way to separate it out. So ones for the approval, ones for the most, uh, for the findings.
Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you.
Mayor, may I, may I chime in with your?
Yes, of course, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor, um, I just wanted to add that. We have presented the findings for the first case and those can be adopted tonight. For the second two cases, we will present the full written drafts at a subsequent meeting. Like we normally do with zoning ordinance. Cases, so, uh, there are some, some of the findings are in the staff memo, but the full draft of the written findings of fact and conclusions of law. For the two rezoning cases, the second two cases, those will be presented subsequently.
Okay, so we actually, at, at most, we will probably then have four motions tonight.
Yes, apologies for the error, that's one that just kinda escaped all of our eyes. It's been a complicated case to put together and to determine the proper mechanism of approval for it. And so apologies to all, that is an error that we just kinda, every one of us overlooked.
Nope, no, I'm just trying to make sure that to Counselor Rivera's point, we have clarity. So we have samp, we have sample motions for each case and then there will be one regarding findings of fact.
Yes.
So before we get into the case, I wanna, for, again, for people who are listening or watching and unaccustomed or not familiar with the. Process for a public hearing around, uh, a land use case such as this. We'll begin again with any disclosure of ex parte communications or, uh, potential self-recusal. We'll have a staff report, hopefully in the neighborhood of ten minutes, we'll have. The applicant will be given, uh, time to speak in the neighborhood of fifteen minutes, we'll go to public comment. Perhaps two minutes per person. Then the governing body will have time individually to ask questions of either the applicant or the staff or the public potentially. Uh, once we've, uh, completed that part of the process. I will then close the public hearing, at which point we could reopen it, but it would take a motion to reopen it and entertain more questions. Once the public hearing is closed, the council, the governing body will go to deliberations and as we just did. Uh, a motion, a second and discussion, which will then lead to voting. So with that process having been, um, walked through. Is there anyone in this case who believes they have had ex parte communication or believes they need to recuse themselves? Alright, in that case, let's begin with, uh, staff report, um, and we'll go with, uh, Lee, you have the floor.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor and counselors, uh, and before I begin, I just wanna say. That these are certainly very busy and difficult times for the city and I just wanna express my appreciation for. Everything you guys do and the decisions you have to make every day. That said, I will start my presentation here. Uh, again, this is, uh, a development. These cases are related to a development that's become known as Aguafina because it stretches from. Aguafria to Rafina Street and it's become a clever name. It is a three-part case, uh, and will involve three separate approvals. I'm just trying to get my little Zoom window out of the way of myself here. Um, to give you just the, the context of it, you've got Aguafria Street on the north here. Rafina Street, Aguafina comprises three parcels here. I'm showing you another one that is not before you tonight, but it is a subdivision we are in the process. Of working with and getting to the planning commission. I show you both because they are somewhat related and, uh, the same agent is representing both parties. And, and there's some things in the history in particulars of this case that relate to Casas de Totos. This is, still trying to get this window out of the way. This is a aerial view, Google view, kinda oblique of the properties, so again, Aguafria Street here. You've got forty-two sixty-two Aguafria, which is currently zoned R five, uh, also known as tract one in the various materials that were in your packet. You've got, uh, forty-seven oh one Rafina Street, um. Here, tract C two, which is zoned R three. And then this is the same view, just a little further south over here to the side, you've got forty-seven oh two, which is also zoned R three. And this parcel ends somewhere in the neighborhood here, right above all these trees and so forth. Just to give you a very quick background, because it is in your staff report and, uh, I'm sure you've already read it. In twenty twelve, a different applicant sought R one to R five rezoning for forty-seven oh one and forty-seven oh two Rafina. Just to clarify, forty-two sixty-two Aguafria was already R five. The planning commission recommended R three. Uh, the governing body first rejected the rezoning, but then rescinded their, uh, denial, decided to rehear it and approved it to R three. When they approved the R three zoning for those two parcels, uh, they placed conditions on all three, even though. The Aguafria parcel was not part of that application and the net effect was it restricted how. Uh, not only the Aguafria parcel, but every parcel could be developed. And that, in a nutshell, that was that each parcel would be a base course private lot access driveway with eight homes maximum. There were a series of hearings after that, um, that we don't really need to go into tonight because those were all related to the subdivision. Which was ultimately approved, but it was never recorded and the approval expired. Over the course of twenty nineteen to twenty twenty, uh, Liaison Planning kinda picked up the project, uh, for the owners. There've been a series of, uh. Yes, thank you, I just, the mail comes at all hours in my neighborhood and I just got a delivery, I'm sorry. Through the course of the last year or two, uh, the applicant has been, um. Working with the neighbors on a variety of, uh, things originally, they were gonna revive. The original twenty-three lot subdivision and through these discussions, uh. In the end, the neighbors decided that. They would be willing to accept an increase in density if they got proper roads and most importantly, site-built homes or often called stick-built as well. Staff like this because, uh, we believe the paved roads would be better situation, more durable all around. And most importantly, there would be sidewalks that will connect the various parcels. So again, it's three requests to, much like your last case, to amend the conditions attached to an ordinance. In this case, they are found in the findings of fact and conclusions of law rather than the ordinance itself. Rezoning request for forty-seven oh one to R five and rezoning request to R six for forty-seven oh two. The first component here, the first case, uh, once again, the, the conditions we're talking about were called the applicant undertakings. And the findings of fact and conclusions of law for that case, and those were four, that the, and again, this was something the developer. And the, uh, residents had agreed upon is that they would submit their request for all three lots. Uh, as one subdivision, one application. That forty-two sixty-two Aguafria, uh, even though it was zoned R five, would be developed at more of an R three density. The third was that they would not use power line road as an access at all, in other words, not connect the road there. And that they would instead propose three base court, base course lot access driveways. Uh, and finally, grant an easement to Abe and Kathleen Tapia and their successors, uh, for their home, which is the one that's kinda in the middle of everything. The amendment will be achieved by adopting new findings of fact and conclusions of law for that case. That would supersede the old ones. And basically, they would be removing, uh, undertakings two and three. Uh, so again, with the rezonings, the reasons they're two different densities, with forty-seven oh one is to match the density. Of the north tract, C one. And again, to develop at a density that would support financially paved roads, sidewalks, site-built homes. Forty-seven oh two is a slightly higher request, R six. That's to match the density of the Casa de Totos neighborhood to the south. And once again, to provide a density that will financially support paved roads, sidewalks and, uh, site-built homes. Criteria, much like the last case, there's no spec, specific criteria in chapter fourteen for an ordinance amendment like this. Staff feels the best way to look at it is, it's a decision on whether or not development consisting of paved public roads and sidewalks. Rather than private unpaved lot access driveways is better for pedestrian connectivity and the overall public interest. Rezonings, in a nutshell, that is specified in our code, whether the higher density is more advantageous, whether it's consistent with general plan policies. Whether the infrastructure is adequate or can be modified and whether it's consistent with surrounding density. Uh, in summary, uh, staff feels that the requests are consistent with the density, the requests would provide. Uh, high-quality public roads and sidewalks, which we feel is important, uh, creating a higher quality subdivision. And pedestrian connectivity, uh, the requests are consistent with the expressed desire of Los Secias Neighborhood Association. For site-built homes, uh, and finally, the requests have the support of staff, traffic and Los Secias. So our recommendation is that the governing body should approve zoning ordinance amendment. And that the governing body should approve the rezonings. And that's it for me.
Thank you very much, um, pardon me. I think we'll turn now to the applicant and, uh, applicant must, uh, be sworn in and provide. Name and address for the record and then the, the presentation floor is yours.
Thank you, Ms. Vihill. Under penalty of perjury, do you swear that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole, nothing but the truth?
I do. My name is Dolores Vihill, P O Box eighteen thirty-five, Santa Fe, New Mexico, eight seven five zero four. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, counselors, I'd like to be able to share a screen if I may to get this presentation started and I'll be as brief as I can, thank you.
Great. Noah, can you enable that, please?
Mayor, Dolores, the, it is enabled.
Okay, I think you've got screen share, uh, available to you now.
Okay, can you see that?
Yes.
Thank you, um, as you know, I'm here representing the applicant who is the Aguafina Development LLC. And a request to rezone two lots from R three to R six and R five. And to rescind conditions placed on lot C one as part of the rezoning that was approved back in two thousand and twelve. As staff mentioned in his report, which is very clear and concise, this request is, um. Is to allow for the applicant to develop the property so that it could have, um. Paved roads and also connectivity to sidewalks and, um, trails that are surrounding the property and is inconsistent. And is consistent with the surrounding areas and the zonings that are in place now. As you see, the top of the, um. Map, you will see C one, which is here, which is zoned currently, this is an official zoning map, R five. The applicant has been limited to using it as an R three zoning and so that is why we are requesting. This amendment, um, at this time. Also, we have the, um, property to the south of, um, lot C one, which is currently R three, which we are correct. Requesting an R five zoning, which is consistent with the surrounding area. And then as you go further south, um, the property to south of Rafina is, um, now an R three zoning. And we are requesting an R six, which is consistent with the proposed Casa de Totos. That will be located south of that lot. And in this lot here, there will be access that will go through both lots. Which will connect, um, Aguafina to Las Secias to the east and come out through, um, to Rafina. So that's important that we stay consistent with the zoning for those two lots. Um, let's see. I do have, um, the team here and who can answer any questions if you have, we have Carl Summer with Carnes and Associates. Summer Carnes and Associates, we have Orla Nguredo Ortiz, she is our, with Design Ingenuity, she is our engineer. And Maury Walker, who has, uh, with Walker Engineering, he has also done the traffic impact analysis for this project. And we have the applicant himself, Mr. Rudy Rodriguez, who is the managing partner for Aguafina subdivision. I think that, uh, Mr. Logston has done an excellent job in explaining a very difficult case. And how it needs to proceed, um, to, to be approved. And so we would like to request that you approve this application and, um. Hopefully providing some affordable housing for Santa Fe residents and those who, um, would like to move into Santa Fe with. Nice quality stick-built homes and, um, paved roads, sidewalks and connectivity with parts that are existing out there. So now we stand for any questions. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. We'll see when we get to, uh, question period, whether any of the, uh, people you've brought need to be sworn in as well, but we'll.
Thank you.
For the moment, uh, we'll go to, uh, public, uh, sworn public comment, if there are attendees in the, uh, attendee room who. Wish to speak to this, this is the time for a sworn public comment.
Mayor, it does not look we have, look like we have any members of the public present.
Alright, uh, if there's no one wishing to speak to this, uh, from the public. Then, uh, what we will do is, uh, entertain questions from the governing body of either. Staff or of the applicant at this time. If you, uh, have a question, uh, or, uh, you wish further information, please raise your hand and I'll call on you. Uh, Counselor Rivera.
Uh, thank you, Mayor, um. This location was in District Three, uh, the first time it came up, so. Uh, if I can ask the applicant why. uh, if I can ask the applicant why they haven't, um, I guess, started on any, uh, building, um, with the approvals they had from the governing body in, I think it was 2012 and 2013.
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor, Council Rivera, the, the person who actually made the original application has passed away and the partners, um, they really didn't have the means to move forward with the application as it was approved. So then, uh, Mr. Rodriguez was contacted by the remaining partners to, um, help them move forward with this application.
And they, they decided as a group, I guess, that it would be higher density?
Yes.
All right. And you had a E&amp;Ns with, um, specifically the Los Secas neighborhood, which was, um, very vocal, um, uh, in 2012, 2013 about having less density. Um, can you, uh, let me know what, what their comments were about this development?
Sure. When we started, we actually were wanting to, um, submit the original application the way it was approved. But then as time went by and meeting with the neighbors and having several E&amp;Ns and meeting with the, um, homeowners association, uh, they decided they would really like to see stick-built homes and also paved roads with sidewalks and connectivity. And so that's why we came up with this new design to provide what they've asked us to do. And in doing so, that would require higher density.
Thank you. So Ms. Paez, um, in, in the past, we've heard, um, during, uh, other meetings like this that, um, once you rezone, um, you can't really commit the developer to do a specific type of, uh, development, whether it's stick-built or whether it's manufactured homes, whatever. So why is this one different?
Thank you. Uh, Mayor Weber, Council Rivera, it's a good question. So under both state law and our city code, we cannot as a city condition require an applicant to build site-built versus a manufactured housing. So that is certainly something that an applicant can choose to do. It's not something that we can impose as a city mandated condition of approval.
So they're asking for rezoning and they've convinced the neighbors that they're doing stick-built, but there's no way for us to, uh, force them to commit to that.
So, yeah, hang on. I don't know exactly who, uh, I think, uh, Ms. V. Hill wants to speak to this and Sally, you may want to as well.
My question was for Ms. Paez.
Okay. Thank you, Counselor.
Not as a condition of a city-required condition of approval. Um, it would not be appropriate. We can certainly reflect in the findings of fact and conclusions of law that applicants are committing to do that. Um, we can reflect that in the decisions of the city that they're, they have committed to do that. If they want to, you know, put that on the record and say that, um, it would be at least a part of our, our minutes and our conditions. Um, at the end of the day, it's really not something that we can sort of mandate. And so as long as it's not us twisting their arm and requiring it, but we can certainly reflect that type of, um, desire to do that, um, or however they want to frame it, but we can reflect it in the findings, um, just not as a condition of approval.
All right. And then can you, uh, speak briefly about the power line road? I know that was a big discussion point during, um, in 2012, 2013 and the resident that lived at the end of the road and what they're planning to do with that?
Who is that addressed to, Counselor?
Uh, either Ms. Paez or the.
Applicant?
The applicant.
Okay. Uh.
I might defer to the applicant on that one. I can explain certainly sort of the discussion at Planning Commission and how they were kind of viewing, um, how to look at which conditions should be revised and why. Uh, we certainly had testimony at that time. We had the benefit of John Romero explaining his take on power line road and how it fits into our overall road system. So I'm sure, uh, Mr. Logston and Mr. Burt can chime in on that and Director Isaacson, they were all there too. But I'll let the applicant speak to that because I think they're probably in the best position to, to answer the question.
Ms. V. Hill, do you have an answer to, uh, the Counselor's question?
Um, Mr. Mayor, Counselor, yes, I do. Uh, we've met several times with, uh, Mr. Romero on, uh, the decision on how to deal with power line road and every time it comes out and with the neighbors that we would like to, that they would not allow us to use power line road as an access only for emergency vehicles. And, um, that's what we would do. And it's in the design that we've already, uh, developed. But also we do have an easement that would allow, um, Mr. Tapia and his family from now on to be able to access his property because honestly, that's the only way he can access the property right now. Unless, um, unless he also uses, you know, the, the proposed routes that would go through that lot. Um, but they are, will be, um, used only for, power line road will only be used either by the Tapias or for emergency access. I hope that answers your question.
Yes. And Ms. Paez, is there anything in what we're doing right now that is going to hold the applicant to that? Or is that subject to later determination?
Thank you, Mayor Weber, Council Rivera. It's, it's a good question. The thing that's interesting about this power line road condition in our, uh, existing conditions in the, the previous findings of fact and conclusions of law that we're proposing to amend is that condition is kind of lumped in to, um, what enumerated applicant undertaking with another condition. They're, they're kind of separate things, but they're kind of lumped together. So the way that that applicant undertaking reads in the findings and conclusions, the, the previous set, existing set, is that, um, power line road won't be used, um, and that, except as described by Ms. V. Hill and that, uh, that this will be developed as three base course private lot access driveways serving eight houses each. I'm kind of probably getting that slightly wrong, but those two items were in a single applicant undertaking. And what our applicants are requesting is to get rid of the, the condition about the three private drives with eight houses each, but they haven't asked to remove the power line condition. So they're, they're okay with, um, retaining that existing condition. The Planning Commission added a recommendation that they thought that that entire applicant undertaking should be struck, including the power line part and the private drive part. But the applicant has only requested that the, the private drive part be removed so that they can develop at the higher density with the, the full roads and sidewalks and.
And is there anyone on that can talk about traffic issues?
Uh, I think the applicant has a, a traffic consultant who could speak to it if.
Is there anyone from the city?
Um, uh, Mr. Mayor, Council Rivera, so, uh, when this case was heard by Planning Commission, um, John Romero, uh, with Public Works was still working with the city and provided testimony at the Planning Commission meeting. His, uh, his memo is included in the packet this evening. Um, and, um, we could certainly, uh, reference that in our conversations. However, uh, there's no one on staff that has the same credentials or qualifications to speak to, uh, traffic, uh, in the same way.
All right. Well, just, um, you know, again, since I used to represent this district, just say that, uh, you know, I have a hard time, um, having an applicant come and make promises of stick, stick-built homes, but really have no way of ensuring that once the rezoning is done, that they're going to stick to their, their end of the bargain. So, um, we've had this several times and, uh, I'm not comfortable with it, but I'll listen to the rest of the, the discussion and see what my colleagues have to say and I will go from there. So thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Counselor. Uh, other, uh, members of the governing body want to speak or ask questions at this time? No. Uh, if there are no other, oh, thank you, Council Mayor Worth. I see your hand, uh, is up. You have the floor.
I, I just have a quick question. Um, and I, it's probably for our planning people. Um, Casa de Totos is in what stage of approval of their subdivision?
Uh, Counselor, we have a preliminary subdivision, uh, application that, uh, was moving through DRT review and an issue with the roads came up. So it's, uh, I guess the easiest way to characterize it is it is under review with an uncertain, uh, hearing date at this point.
Because I, I believe you referenced it as, or, or maybe it was Ms. V. Hill, uh, who referenced it as a, as the reason why, uh, it, it, the change in the density was going to match that. So it's funny. I mean, it's going to match something that's not there yet. And then when they come into the process, are they going to say they're matching that thing, the, 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 the Aguafina? Because that's the density that's been established there. It's, it seems kind of odd, I guess.
Uh, sure. Uh, Counselor, yeah, I'm not sure exactly how to answer that. Um, it is, uh, Dolores is the agent for, uh, both owners, um, and she is, uh, shepherding both projects through our process. Um, the, the density of Casa de Totos, or Casa de Totos parcels are zoned R6 already. Um, that's a process we went through about a year ago, I think, already. And, um, uh, the proposal before us there is R6. Um, it just seemed logical. The intent all along has been to connect that road to, rather than having a dead end coming south off Rufina to connect that road through. And it just seemed logical to the applicant to match that R6 density. I mean, conceivably, that could be an R5 request, but, uh, just overall, the density is what makes this pencil, um, to build roads and sidewalks. And I don't know, perhaps Dolores wants to answer to there.
Council Mayor Worth, you want more? Is that pretty much answer what you're looking for?
Yeah, I think that's fine. I just.
Yep.
Me is interesting and, um, I, I certainly saw in the memos that, uh, the density is necessary for, uh, what is being promised to the neighborhood. So thank you.
Um, I, I want to come back to, uh, Council Rivera's, well, let me hold off until, now that there's another hand up, I'll hold off. Council Cassidy Sanchez, you have the floor.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Um, you know, I'm not sure who can answer this because this does have to do a little bit with traffic. There was discussion in the packet regarding the Rufina Lopez Lane intersection. And I know that we have had this discussion with other cases in the past and it is a concern because it is an intersection that needs work, um, especially as we are taking on more traffic. I am curious if there's anybody on the call who can speak to that or, um, okay, uh, Eli, go for it. You raised your hand.
So, uh, I may be able to answer it. I'll, I'll take a, I'll, I'll make an attempt. Um, so we discussed this, um, recently with the Jackson subdivision proposal. Um, and you may remember that, 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 uh, development dedicated, uh, portion of their property to the right-of-way at Rufina and Lopez Lane to allow the city at some point in the future to do some, uh, intervention or improvement of that intersection to help with traffic flow, whether it be a signalized intersection or a traffic circle. And so that is something that, uh, we are thinking about and have made accommodations for in previous approvals, um, and would like to explore further, uh, with, um, as we, uh, look at public works and streets improvements, uh, down the road.
Yeah. Thank you for, uh, jogging my memory on that. And then of course, part of that is city funding to be able to, uh, make those improvements. And I know, uh, there was discussion about impact fees. Again, I don't believe anybody from Public Works is here to really, uh, give me a more in-depth response to this question. Um, I do see Noah raising his hand, so.
Noah, go ahead. You have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor, Councilors. Um, uh, so this is a project that is listed on our IFCIP list as a project that has been, um, taken before the city council and added to our list in the past. It still remains on that list, um, and it does include some funding that's devoted from our impact fees towards a project of that intersection. Um, the next step that would have to happen is that Public Works, uh, secures some type of funding in their budget or for their capital improvements budget to, uh, finish that funding and allocate it towards this project. And then we would be able to, um, take that project and, and make it, um, out of bid and.
Okay. Thank you, Noah. Um, yeah, I just want to make sure that this stays on our radar, especially as we are looking at some of these Public Works projects. There's been a lot of development in this area that intersection is taking, um, is taking a lot more traffic on. I know that the traffic studies are indicating that the roads can, can handle them, but, um, I do think that it is incumbent upon us to be addressing that. So thank you for, um, for the information on that. That was all.
Thank you. Uh, other questions from, uh, governing body? I wouldn't mind, uh, asking a follow-up question to Counselor Rivera because I think Ms. Paez may, oh, I'm sorry, Council Villarreal, I just saw your hand. I, I, um, slowed, I'm looking at the screen, not at the hands up. You have the floor, Council, uh, Councilwoman.
I raised my hand just as you were talking. So, you know, I just want to verify some things because going through this packet, large packet on Prime Gov is hard to toggle between different pages, but, so, the final decision, and I guess this is for, um, Lee. So they will be required to do affordable housing as it relates to our affordable, um, homes program. So it's, that's a piece of that, right? That was agreed upon. That's still going forward. That hasn't changed, correct?
Yes, it's been a while and I might have to have Dolores answer this, uh, Counselor. Um, because it's been a while since I've gone back quite that far in it, but, uh, there, they did, uh, submit a Santa Fe Homes proposal that Alexandra Ladd, uh, reviewed and yes, uh, they intend to fulfill their, uh, requirement. I might let Dolores answer how, um, or the intent.
Sure. Council Villarreal, yes, we have been meeting with, um, Alexandra Ladd, um, throughout this process. Of course, it keeps changing. So she is aware that we will be fulfilling the affordable housing requirement. And I believe at this time with this amount of units that we're proposing, it would be at least 11, nine to 11 units that we will, um, well, actually lots that we will slate for affordable housing.
So it depends on how you finally build, but it's essentially 20%. So initially 12 lots that you all agreed to?
Yes.
Okay.
With the, with the rezoning, of course.
Right. Okay. And then there were other requests by, uh, Los Secas and just curious where that went. Um, one was the impact fees, which we're looking into that we just got clarification on. Um, the other was a block wall and that was, the discussion was that that was too expensive and fences were more likely. So what was the decision on that? What, what kind of outcome came about?
Uh, who are you asking, Councilwoman?
Hmm. I, I don't know who made the negotiations. I don't know if it's Lee or Dolores that can explain that piece.
Uh, Mayor, Councilors, I could, I could address that. Um, in the end, there's, there was no decision made. It, it was kind of relegated to future discussion and negotiation. Um, the prospect, we're talking about like, uh, track C1 alone is some, uh, 1,300, 1,500 feet long. So we are talking about a very expensive wall and in negotiations, uh, in the E&amp;N, uh, talking with the neighbors, the prospect of, well, so A, for the applicant, you know, it was felt like that would, was prohibitively expensive and would be something that would increase the price of the homes. But then it also kind of came up that it could lead to all kinds of property line disputes. You may have somebody who's for, I don't know how long Los Secas has been there. I think 20 years or something. Um, but you know, for 20 years, they thought their rear yard ended here because that's where their fence is. And it may turn out that that's three feet, five feet into, uh, Aguafina properties. And so we got to thinking, okay, by the time you add up the 50, 60, however many homes it is, all along that way, you may open up a huge can of worms. And so, uh, it was kind of relegated to, let's keep discussing this as we move forward. And again, we don't have a, a subdivision application here just yet where that would really get hammered up. But that's my recollection of kind of how that played out, uh, at the here, at the. But that's my recollection of kinda how that played out, uh, at the here, at the, uh, E N N's.
And that discussion would probably be at the planning commission level for a final development plan?
Uh, councillor, yes, that's correct.
Um, so councillor Lindell and I were reminiscing how we were part of this case and had to make decisions when we were sitting on the planning commission for, for it. And it was frustrating mostly because of the connectivity issue and the fact that the developers weren't willing to make actual roads. And it was very, I thought that it was short-siding, it was short-sighted, because it was not really providing the infrastructure needed. So, I'm happy to see that they actually made some adjustments to that, um, and realized that that's what people need to actually live in quality housing. The infrastructure is very important. I know connectivity was the issue. I, I know there's been some adjustments and the, the road that won't be utilized, um, why am I not remembering the?
Power line.
Power line, it, it's complicated. And I think I read from John Romezzo's point of view that we didn't necessarily need that piece to make it a full connection. So, I'm okay with that. I know it's a little challenging for the folks that live right there at the edge, the family that's gonna have the access or easement. So, I feel better about this. I'm still also concerned with, um, with councillor Rivetta's point, and the mayor might ask more about this. But, yeah, I'm just trying to see, how do we make commitments from developers once they start getting into it? And then they decide, well, that's not really what we wanna do. So, did Dolores, did Ms. V. Hill have a, a perspective on that? Because, you know, we say one thing, but when really the numbers, developers are trying to make the numbers work, sometimes they change their mind, and we're already past the point where we can't really do much about it. So, what's, what's your take on this?
Um, councillor, we have talked, actually, when we first came in, um, to the city, um, with this application, it was for manufactured homes. And we went round and round with the neighbors. And, um, the developer, Mr. Rodriguez, he could probably tell you that, um, he is going to build stick-built homes, affordable housing. Um, the reason we started with manufactured housing is because it is affordable. But, the neighbors feel that it would, you know, take away from their homes if they had manufactured housing next to theirs. So, then, um, as in, um, an agreement with the neighbors, we, uh, we said, yes, we were gonna do stick-built homes. And, um, the neighbors feel comfortable with that. And I believe Mr. Rodriguez has always said that's what he will do. Um, I'm not sure how you can, um, you know, if someone else were to buy it and they would change their mind, how would you prevent that from them changing it to manufactured homes? I'm not really sure how that would work. But, um, as far as Mr. Rodriguez is concerned, he is, he is committed to stick-built homes and pay.
Are people buying?
Um, I'd like Mr. Rodriguez to answer that, if he could. Mr. Rodriguez, um, if you have your self.
We're gonna need to swear Mr. Rodriguez in.
Yes, Mr. Rodriguez, under penalty of perjury, do you swear that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you, sir.
You have the floor, Mr. Rodriguez. If you could get real close to the mic, so we can hear you clearly.
Okay, I'm sorry, I just missed the last question. You're ninety years old and you're a loose slow.
No problem. Mr. Rodriguez, I was curious if you plan to sell lots? Or will you develop and build the homes and then sell the homes, um, for the subdivision? How does that, how is that gonna work?
Uh, councillor Villarreal, um, that's somewhat up in the air. Um, like, I did say I'm ninety, so we, I might, we might, uh, sell the whole thing, uh, before we try to get into it. But, uh, um, the answer is, I, at this point, uh, I don't know. If, I'll have to look at what it's gonna cost and see if I can just move on. A project, my last project.
Thank you, Mr. Rodriguez. Um, yeah, that's, that's, I think, the sticking point here. It's, it's challenging for us, because we want people to be able to have affordable housing and manufactured home is, that is an option. The, the issue is that we don't control that and have, um, regulations on that. And we struggle with that, because there's times that CID, we're, it's really challenging to figure out how they decide on their standards, 'cause we want people to live in nice homes. And if they're manufactured homes, we also want them to be nice and, um, efficient places to live. So, that's the challenge I feel about this. Um, but I don't have any other further questions for Mr. Rodriguez, and I'll yield the floor for now. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, councillor Rivera, you have the floor.
Can you give me just a minute, uh, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, no problem. Take your time, just, uh, when you're ready to come back in, let me know. Uh, I do think it's worth, uh, perhaps Ms. V. Hill or, uh, other members of your team, there seems to be a, a biting concern about the, uh, the stickiness of the commitment to, uh, stick-built, uh, homes. As, uh, I know that, the, the deal with the neighborhood stipulated that, but what kinds of, uh, assurances or ongoing promises can be made? I see a hand, uh, Mr. Summer's hand is up. Maybe you could be sworn in and speak to this. We need to get you, uh, sworn first, though, sir. Chris, we'll come right back to you. Councillor Rivera.
I'm, I'm still.
No, we're asking Mr. Summer.
Mr. Summer, under penalty of perjury, do you swear that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, um, there are various mechanisms that I think that could be used, um, to guarantee the enforceability of that without running into the problem that Ms. Paez and, um, councillor Rivera identify, which is imposing it as a condition. You could have the, uh, Mr. Rodriguez, Mr. Rodriguez is committed to doing that. He could covenant with the city voluntarily, which covenant would run with the land, would leave the city in the ability, with the only ability to change that and the ability to enforce that. And since Mr. Rodriguez is, is set on doing that and binding any future property owner to it, that will not pose a problem. And I think it, it, it covers the issue that councillor Villarreal, councillor Rivetta, um, have talked about, and it doesn't run afoul of the law or put you in a position where you, you have somebody saying, well, you can't impose that kind of condition. Um, I haven't spoken directly to Mr. Rodriguez, but this method is consistent with what his, his promises are to you. And I know that, uh, at ninety years old, he didn't get to be as successfully as he is by going back on his word. Um, and I, I suggest to you, this is one way that we could do that and let Mr. Rodriguez, uh, say whether he's, he's, uh, willing to consider that. It puts you all in a position to have the absolute enforcement.
Thank you, councillor. Um, Mr. Rodriguez, did you hear what Mr. Summer said about a covenant on the land?
Yes, can you hear me? I'm not sure.
Yes, we're hearing you very clearly.
Uh, absolutely. Uh, we'd sign an affidavit, whatever, uh, council would, would request and bind any future, uh, property, any future owners that, to abide by it also. Absolutely.
Thank you, sir. Okay, councillor Rivera, you're back, and you have the floor.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. So, uh, again, as a former representative of, of that area, um, I know that the, um, Las Secas Neighborhood Association is very strong, and they would, um, be on here to comment whether they were against or whether they were in favor of everything. So, um, I, uh, text a few members of that neighborhood, and nobody was aware of this meeting. And again, it's a special meeting, it's on a Thursday night, no one expects it, no one realizes that we may be talking about this. There was no discussion with them about, uh, being able to make some public comment on it. So, we talk a lot about transparency, but do we really follow it? And I don't think we've done a good job of being transparent with this. I think the Neighborhood Association, um, deserves the right to, to speak on it, whether they're in favor or against. But, from what I've heard, including from the president, um, they had no idea that the meeting was taking place. So, that concerns me, and again, it's a special meeting, so, you know, they're, unless they were, you know, looking at our weekly agenda, they wouldn't know that it was on here. So, I hope in, um, the spirit of transparency that we would consider that as, as we vote tonight and, you know, potentially postpone this until, um, the Neighborhood Association, I think, is adequately, um, advised about, about the meeting and, and, uh, able to make, uh, um, any comments that, that they have, whether they're for or against. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Um, Ms. Paez, your hand is up. Um, and Lee, uh, you, your hand isn't up, but it's a, councillor Rivera raises a very compelling question, which is, did we notify the Neighborhood Association that this meeting was going on? Did, he's absolutely right, this is a very active, uh, association with, with leadership that always shows up. How, how, uh, how were we able not to get them, uh, here this evening? Is there any?
Mr. Mayor, Noah asked to, uh, address this point.
Noah, do you have a answer for this?
Yes, thank you, mayors and councillors. Um, we had a conversation, appreciate the questions. Um, one of the things I would say here is, in the house, I can't raise my hand, I just love to leave this a lot of times, so I'm sorry for having to text people who could maybe raise their hand. Um, so, I think, one of the things is we did properly notice this. Um, we mailed all residents and neighborhood associations within three hundred feet, fifteen days prior to the meeting, I believe. Um, we do get a verification from the applicant and the applicant, and then there's also posters out there. Um, and we do, we've been very thorough about doing, making sure of that. I think the fact that we're having a special meeting on a Thursday does throw some people off. Um, the other thing that, like, you know, you might be able to do, since we're not hearing a subdivision tonight, we're just hearing the rezonations, which I think is important to point out, um, is that, um, a lot of, some of the conversation would be, um, the conversation that's been taking place tonight would be heard at the planning commission stages, um, and the planning commission could impose certain types of conditions. But the concern with the stick-built versus manufactured houses, um, has been a, a huge topic of conversation in the past and presently with the neighborhood. And the reason that we propose this density is that it would be able to build the, if we got this density and they committed to, um, stick-built homes, and they'd be able to build the infrastructure to support it. And so, that was one of the reasons. Um, you could also place deed restrictions on the land as well. Um, and I would, you know, that, as in terms of manufactured homes versus, um, stick-built homes. So, that is something that is, um, the applicant could also do, um, short of creating an evidence that would go with the association that would oversee this.
I, I may be mistaken, and I need some guidance on process here, but I believe the president of the Neighborhood Association may now be in the attendee room. Maybe you could.
Yeah, that's correct. It looks like body on the field is, um, attendance.
And I know we asked for sworn public comment already, but, um, I, I think we can let him speak if that would be, uh, okay with the governing body at this time, given the issue raised by councillor Rivera's. Do we need to reo, we, do we need to reopen that formally?
Mr. Mayor, I do recommend you take a vote to reopen. I would just, uh, ask that the governing body not communicate with witnesses who aren't in the room, who haven't come. Um, it's similar, just in general, to how we restrict our communications about these cases. Um, but if there is a witness in the, in the attendee room and the governing body wishes to reopen, I think you could do that.
Okay, uh, can we get a motion to reopen the, uh, public, sworn public comment, uh, segment of our hearing?
Motion to reopen.
I heard that from both, uh, I heard a motion from, uh, councillor Mereworth and councillor V. Hill Copley. I assume we've got a, a motion and a second. Can the clerk please call the roll?
Yes, councillor Garcia.
Yes.
Councillor Lindell.
Yes.
Councillor Rivera.
Yes.
Councillor Mereworth.
Yes.
Councillor V. Hill Copley.
Yes.
Councillor Villarreal.
Yes.
Councillor Beta.
Yes.
Councillor Cassidy Sanchez.
Yes.
Mayor Weber.
Yes.
Thank you, motion has been approved.
So, with that in mind, uh, Joe, I think, um, Mr. Trillo is the, uh, president of that association, and he is present in the attendee room. Perhaps you could promote him and we'll give him, uh, Mr. Trillo, you, you will have time to present your neighborhood's view on this matter. Uh, take three minutes if you need it.
Uh, good evening, uh, members of the council.
I think you need to be sworn in first.
Okay.
Yes, Mr. Trillo, under penalty of perjury, do you swear that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Uh, good evening, members of the, uh, council and, uh, the members of the governing body. Just wanted to let you know, uh, we've had numerous public meetings, special neighborhood association meetings, and also, uh, E N N meetings on this project. Our position regarding this project is, is that we want stick-built homes, which they have agreed to do. We want, uh, we, we're okay with, uh, what we're concerned a lot about in this project is the traffic that is going to be on, um, Rufina. This project, we've talked about this with other project, is going to, uh, contribute significantly to the traffic, and particularly the traffic buildup over on Lopez Lane. Those are the most important parts of the project that we like, that we are, we see that, that are important to us. Also, we want them to, uh, to be good neighbors. They have promised off and on about, um, you know, we want them to be held before, to, to the standard that these stick-built homes would also have like a, uh, a, a wall or a barrier between the, the, um, Awkwafina and the subdivision that has not been agreed to. They have gone back and forth between that. That's something that we'd like to see happen. And so, those are the, the, the areas that we agreed to. I'm not completely familiar what changes. I was in here for the presentation. Um, I don't remember getting a meeting notice with this, but that, that's okay. But I'm, I'm willing to, um, I'm not sure what other changes that they're proposing tonight. But, um, if they are willing to have, uh, stick-built homes, uh, we are okay with, um, the rezoning of this particular project. If they're not, then we oppose it.
Thank you. That's, uh, uh, I know you weren't in, in the room for some of the proceedings. Um, there was a stipulation or a suggestion to have a, um, legal agreement that would run with the land that would require stick-built homes. Uh, that was an earlier discussion, and I'm sorry you weren't in, in the room for that, uh, conversation that was, uh, led by councillor Rivera. Uh, is there anyone else in the attendee room who would like to speak to this at this time? Okay, we'll go back to the council, or the governing body asking questions. Councillor Rivera, you still have the floor.
Uh, thank you, uh, Mayor, and I appreciate what the city attorney said. Um, however, I think there was a, a lack of communication regarding the special meeting. Clearly, people didn't know about it, and I knew that, um, because there was no one here to speak. So, if I'm in the wrong, I'm in the wrong, but, um, I knew that this Neighborhood Association is very active and, and would have been, um, on either to speak in favor or against. So, um, uh, again, this was a special circumstance, a special meeting, and, uh, I stand my, by my decision to call and find out if they actually knew. So, thank you, Mayor, that's all I have.
Okay, thank you, councillor. Uh, councillor V. Hill Copley, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, I, I wanted, I raised my hand earlier, but decided to wait, because I wanted to hear what the president of Las Secas Neighborhood Association had to say. And, um, you know, I'm, I'm fairly good at... you know, I'm I'm uh fairly good at at attending their HOA meetings or their association meetings, and uh, so I've developed a a good rapport with many of the the residents who live there, and uh, what I was going to say before Mr. Trujillo commented, which he affirms what my my experience has been, that the phone calls and uh emails that I've received, although I haven't received recently, real recent, but uh, any of the emails and comments and phone calls I've received on this issue have been that their their biggest concern was having stick-built homes. And uh, one, one reason for that is uh, I think that there's a lot of concern about the property values and such, and uh, they want to preserve the, you know, the integrity of their neighborhoods and uh, and just have like, like with like. And uh, they they also want to welcome the, my my recollection of the discussion is they want to welcome their new neighbors when they come and uh have more camaraderie. They have a wonderful association, as Counsel Rivera pointed out. Uh, they're very active. They have really good and fun things. It's not all bad. Uh, you know, the, I I like to say and give a shout out to the police department because they also are attendees, and they're very helpful in these meetings and in listening to neighborhood concerns. And everything that this neighborhood association has done has been for the greater good. And uh, they are concerned about all the right things. Uh, I think uh they would be uh certainly very welcoming to the new uh subdivision and neighborhood adjacent to them. But they do uh, they do have a concern for their own property values and uh hence a concern for wanting stick-built homes. And and as I listened to earlier, the solution uh that was presented by Mr. Sommer about uh covenants and having those, they do run with the land and and uh getting those indoctrinated somehow in in what we're doing, because as Mr. Burke pointed out, we're only considering the rezoning, and that's, you know, our prime vote today. But um, I I hear a a good solution, and I think uh as this goes on through the the rest of the process, then those conditions and they can, they can talk more about the wall. Uh, but uh, you know, and and get, this neighborhood can get more assurance that they would get to a point where it's indoctrinated that the stick-built homes are, would be there to stay. So I'm in support of of this project, and uh, I know that there's assurances down the road that still have to be met. But uh, going back to the stick-built homes, uh, that's real important, and I see a solution here tonight. So thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Counselor. Uh, I see a couple more hands are up. Um. Uh, Lee, your hand was up. I don't know if there was something you needed to address, and Counselor Romero Worth's hand is up as well.
Uh, yes, thank you, Mayor. Uh, I just wanted to address, I believe Fabian is still. Yeah, he's still here. Uh, just to clarify for you, Fabian, basically what the uh governing body is looking at tonight is exactly the same thing that the planning commission looked at, looked at back. I'm drawing a blank on the date, but it's the exact same three cases. So the planning commission made a recommendation. The governing body is considering it. And I just wanted to say, because I was texting Dolores, and she's saying she can't speak one way or another. Um. Absolutely, this hearing, I can understand the idea that um it's an unusual time and unexpected, and the debate's going on even. But uh, absolutely, this meeting was noticed properly in the newspaper. Uh, Dolores sent out over three hundred letters, and the posters are on site as well, so uh, I certainly can understand how a different meeting time might throw some people, but uh noticing, notice for this hearing was provided. I just wanted to clarify that.
Thank you. Counselor Romero Worth, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I I guess I have a process question. It's probably for um the City Attorney's Office. Uh, if we can't um, I think you said we can't make stick-built a condition of approval. Um, and somebody here suggested that a covenant uh or I don't know, some legal kind of promise is made. That doesn't happen in this setting. That's something that has to happen somewhere else, I I would think. Is that true?
Is that addressed to Ms. Pies or?
Yes.
Yeah, Sally?
Thank you, Mayor Weber. Counselor Romero Worth, you're asking, I'm sorry, about when a covenant would be entered into?
How would you? Go ahead, Counselor.
So the you you stated earlier that um because of federal law, I believe, we can't impose stick-built versus manufactured home um be built on this site. But as a condition of approval. But we can reflect that uh, that's the builder's intent in the findings and facts and conclusions of law, I guess, or in our minutes, or or, you know, in other ways. Um, but then it was brought up that maybe a covenant would help reassure uh that this property would be stick-built. But that's not, a covenant is between private property owner and so that's not something we can do in this setting.
Thank you, Counselor. Um, for the clarification, I think that we um could probably add a condition. I'm thinking along the lines of what Mr. Summer proposed, and if he wants to weigh in further, I'm sure we could let him do that, but it it's it's a requirement of the state statute, actually, in our code, that when we're zoning, we can't differentiate between manufactured and site-built in terms of when we establish a zoning density. It's, we have to treat manufactured and site-built alike. So we can't really condition that as a city requirement, but I think it might be appropriate, since here we have an applicant who's clearly volunteering to do this, that wants to do this, and is willing to bind this land to that type of condition um to require perhaps. I'm thinking instead of maybe a covenant with the city, but perhaps a covenant with the Los Secas Neighborhood Association, a satisfactory condition with the Neighborhood Association, because usually covenants, I think, are usually best maybe enforced by private parties. That's typically what you see, which I think is what you're suggesting. So I don't know if if the applicants would be amenable to that. But it makes more sense to me that perhaps we could have a condition that says, you know, we approve the rezoning um subject to the condition that the applicants enter into a satisfactory covenant with the Los Secas Neighborhood Association. Something like that. I'm trying to think through in my mind the best way to write it. It's difficult without having a document here, you know. I think if we had sort of anticipated this question, perhaps we could have thought about, you know, what exactly would it look like? Of course, we haven't had the time to really analyze the best way to do something like that. But it seems to me that, and I I see Mr. Burke is raising his physical hand again, since he is blocked out of the raise hand function as our host. Um, so I don't know. I I I guess I can leave it there and see if if Noah wants to add something.
Yeah, and Mayor, I I would like to have Carl Summer address this as well, please, if that's all right.
Yeah, I would too, since he raised it in the first place. He may have had something in mind, but uh Mr. Summer, why don't you go, and then we'll get uh Mr. Burke on the on the floor as well.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, members of council and uh Counselor uh Romero Worth. Uh, the appropriate way we could do this in this particular setting is the findings of fact and conclusions of law, which we are um amending, has this section about um applicant undertakings. We could substitute in in this place um, and the record will reflect an uh another applicant undertaking to um uh impose a covenant running with the land prior to the record date, and that we can make it to the association, as as you talked about, that would work just fine, and make that sub uh as a, as part of the undertakings, that that be recorded um after consultation and agreement with the uh um uh association president and and their association um before the recordation of any final plat. Um, and that way, it would get recorded. It would be a substitution here in a mechanism that is already available to us with this applicant undertakings, and I think that would work just fine. And that would give us time to work out the details with Mr. Trujillo's association. And uh, you know, what we would propose is is just generally what would be typically a covenant with all its enforceability and, you know, all of that stuff. But I think that Ms. Pious is correct, that the the doc, having the document in front of us would be good, but we have a document that we can use right now with this applicant undertakings as a condition in that.
Okay, Mayor, if if I can.
Uh, yeah, I I wondered whether you wanted Noah to weigh in or not.
Uh, that's fine, but then I have a another question.
Okay, uh, Noah, is this, uh, did you, did it, is it already been covered, or do you uh feel that you want to add to the comment?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Uh, Counselor, I, uh, Carl actually summed up pretty much what I was about to say, so thanks, Carl.
Okay, we're good then. Back to you, Counselor Romero Worth.
Um, so I guess the question would be, where in our process tonight do we make such a motion to have such a thing done?
Mayor Weber, Counselor Romero Worth, I would recommend that um rather than adopting the findings of fact and conclusions of law as drafted and presented in your packet tonight, in exhibit, I think it's Exhibit A, that we would amend those findings of fact and conclusions of law to add a new applicant undertaking as summarized by Mr. Summer. Um, we could work out exact language tonight, or we could draft it, and we're already coming back with findings of fact and conclusions of law in our rezoning cases, so the simpler solution might be to present that at the same time with that addition.
Yeah, and I guess the uh, that would be my preference. I don't like this amending in the air. Uh, I think it's dangerous. And um, so I would uh like to see us handle that that way, and and again, I don't know if, I I don't, I I think we're still in discussion among or questions and answers from the governing body, correct? So we're not even in debate among ourselves yet, so.
There is no motion on, there's no motion on the floor as of yet. We're still questioning the applicant and the staff.
Right, and we're not in the period where we make motions, so that's all I have. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Uh, Counselor Rivera, you have the floor.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So first of all, I think uh Mr. Lexington um knows what's supposed to be done on paper, but a a notice is only done properly if people know about it. And clearly, if the Neighborhood Association president was unaware of this meeting, there's something wrong with our our process. Um, I have sent pictures of yellow posters to uh planning and land use that you can't read at all. You look at it, you don't, you can't tell what it says, so that's not a good method of of notifying uh neighbors about what's going on. But my question right now is about the wall. I think the Neighborhood Association probably brought up the issue of a wall between uh this subdivision and um the uh Los Secas neighbors and um clearly, there's no decision made on that. Um, I don't think we can um really uh put that into a covenant, but um and I don't know if we close the the public comment section, but can we hear from Fabian about the wall?
I I did not close the public comment section. Uh, he could make a return uh if if you have a que- you, this is a period of time where you can ask questions of anyone, Counselor, including uh people who have testified from the public, so uh Mr. Trio could respond to a question from you directly.
So my question for Mr. Trujillo is, uh, what does the Neighborhood Association feel about uh the wall between this proposed subdivision and the Los Secas Neighborhood Association? Or Los Secas neighborhood?
Uh, Mr. Trio, I think you are still uh with us, and you have the floor if you can unmute.
Mr. Mayor, Counselor Rivera, uh, thank you. Um. We have many neighbors who would like to see a wall between the uh between the subdivisions, uh particularly the ones that are located um we call Phase Three and Phase Four, which is near the uh Los Secas Park, because there's, that's where there's going to be a lot of uh uh activity over over there, and so they would like that the wall be included. Um, Rudy Rodriguez, uh, Junior, uh, who has a a a subdivision that's going to be adjoining this up on the the southern part of this particular project has agreed already to put a wall. We would like for the wall to be extended it uh so that the whole, the whole subdivision would would be separated between them and the uh uh and the Los Secas uh so that, so that we can uh have uh privacy and and a lot of the different things that we've had before. So that's, that's what a whole bunch of neighbors have expressed to us in uh numerous i- i- in our Neighborhood Association meetings and E N N meetings, and those are some of the things that we're looking to see happen as part of this process.
Thank you.
I thank you, Mr. Trujillo. Um, Ms. Pies, is that something that could be included in the discussion about stick-built homes or?
You, Mayor Weber, and Counselor Rivera. I heard staff uh explain that there were concerns about property line issues, whether the expense of the wall would really change the nature of this project, whether it would be feasible. And so I have a little bit of a concern that unlike the site-built homes, which they're clearly wanting to do and clearly agreeing to, I haven't heard the applicants say that. So to the extent that we're adding this as an applicant undertaking, I'm not sure they would do it. The other thing that I want to note is that typically walls are very far outside the scope of what we would do in a zoning ordinance. And so I do have a concern that this is really better addressed at the subdivision stage. This will be going back to Planning Commission. This will be an issue that I'm sure Mr. Trujillo will be raising in the Neighborhood Association, and that the Planning Commission will be able to debate. Um, so again, it's the kind of thing where maybe the governing body could recommend that the Planning Commission explore this further at the subdivision stage, just to sort of make sure we're directing them to really look at this issue and whether it's feasible. But I do have a little bit of a concern that they haven't, um, at this point, sort of said it's something they want to do, and that we're sort of outside what would normally be a zoning discussion.
Okay, fair enough, and who's going to make sure that that happens? To the Planning Commission.
I I see Mr. Burke raising his hand. He is our formal staff liaison to the Planning Commission. Again, if we're going to be uh drafting the findings of fact and conclusions of law for approval at a subsequent meeting, I'm happy to put a finding in there that says, you know, the the governing body finds that the Planning Commission should further explore, you know, with the applicant and interested members of the public and the Los Secas Neighborhood Association, the feasibility of a wall, you know, just as a a finding. Um, and and certainly staff can take it upon ourselves to make sure and communicate the governing body's desire that this issue be examined at the subdivision stage. And Mr. Burke is trying to weigh in again.
Mr. Burke, you have the floor.
Mayor, Counselors, Counselor Rivera, um, you have my word that we will make sure that this discussion happens at the Planning Commission when the subdivision comes forward. I think all of us, layman, staff, have heard loud and clear the the wants and desires in the conversation about the neighbors and and the council, so um we will definitely make this a I'm sure that this gets addressed um when we get the preliminary subdivision filed and filled with.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Other, uh, we're still in the part of the process where the governing body can ask questions of staff or the public or the applicant. Are there other questions at this time? If there are no further questions from the governing body, and God bless you, Councilwoman Vialle, uh, let's close the public hearing and move to deliberations and or a motion for debate. And we have three separate, uh, I think what we've determined tonight, following uh Ms. Paz's uh suggestion, is to hold off on voting on findings of fact and wait for another meeting for that to be brought with the other two, so we only have at this time, three potential motions for each of the uh items in front of us, so we have to take them individually.
What a border.
Uh, yes.
Um, so I think, though, we do have to uh direct that the findings of fact and conclusions of law contain the covenant that we described earlier. So it probably has four motions.
Okay, is that correct? City Attorney's Office?
If I may, I would, I would like to also ask for one further clarification um on the motion. So the two rezoning cases will be easy. It will be to approve or deny the rezoning as requested in the application. You can follow. You can follow these proposed motions quite closely. It will be easy. But the first case is a little more tricky. And I think I'm just, my point being, I'd like to also have the maker of the motion clarify that we're approving the application and directing staff to draft findings of fact and conclusions of law, reflecting your decision, and, and it would be good if the motion did note this additional applicant undertaking be incorporated. And the other piece that I just would like clarity on is that applicant undertaking that had the two parts. So we had the power line road shall not be used as a primary or secondary access part, and the three lot access private road part. And just as a reminder, recap, I know this is a really confusing and complicated case, but the applicant has requested just to get rid of the private lane condition part of that condition, and the Planning Commission recommended getting rid of the power line piece as well. So I just want to make sure whether we're going with the Planning Commission's recommendation, or if we're approving the application as submitted by the applicant with regard to getting rid of that applicant undertaking. And I know this is like really complicated to make that motion, but I think there's two things that need to be kind of clear in the motion with regard to how we're revising those applicant undertakings.
Counselor Cassidy Sanchez, and then I think Counselor Vihil Coptler had her hand up, or lit, her, her screen lit up.
Um, Mr. Mayor, I was just going to say, I would be happy to be the maker of the motion, but I would request that Ms. Pias give me the language, and then I will just say so.
Oh, boy.
All right, put it on you.
Counselor, are you seeking to?
Going with the applicant's proposal to not be using power line.
The applicant's proposal was just to remove the, the lot access driveway piece.
Correct.
Yes, and then it keeps the provision of power line.
It was correct. The power line limitation would stay. All right, so I'm going to work from Lee's motion. I move to approve the request to amend conditions of ordinance 2013-12 by adopting new findings of fact and conclusions of law that would remove the condition that 4262 AgroFria must be developed consistent with R3 zoning, notwithstanding that it is zoned R5, and the condition that the owner must propose three base core slot access driveways serving eight lots each. And to further amend the findings of fact and conclusions of law to add a new applicant undertaking to record a covenant running with the land with the Los Secas Neighborhood Association to require site-built homes that will be filed, recorded with the county clerk prior to the recording of any subdivision plat.
No move.
I think that pretty much gets us there. Okay.
We have a motion, and we have a second. Is there discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Counselor Rivera?
I think so. I have a couple of issues, and one of them was that there was nobody from the city to answer traffic questions. I think there were some issues, some questions that I had regarding traffic, but clearly with John Romero's absence, no one on board to answer those. And also the lack of notices of consideration or of concern to me, because, again, I don't think anybody knew that this meeting was happening. And again, this is the first special meeting we've had on a Thursday night. It was regarding land, land use cases, and I'm not sure it was fair to the public, the residents, to really have this without making sure that they were all aware, so. And I have some concern about that, so just wanted to bring that up. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other discussion of the motion on the floor? If there is no other discussion at this time, then could the clerk please call the roll on this motion?
Counselor Lindell?
Yes.
Counselor Rivera?
No.
Counselor Romero Worth?
Yes.
Counselor Vihil Coptler?
Yes.
Counselor Villarreal?
Yes.
Counselor Beto?
Yes.
Counselor Cassidy Sanchez?
Yes.
Counselor Garcia?
Yes.
Mayor Weber?
Yes.
Thank you. The motion has been approved.
Okay, and then we are now looking at a motion regarding the next case before us. And I guess, Counselor Romero, your hand is up.
I was going to make a motion, Mayor. Do you want it?
Yes, please.
Move to approve the rezoning request for R3 residential, three-dwelling units per acre to R5 residential, five-dwelling units per acre for 4701 Rafina Street, and to adopt the findings of the Planning Commission as outlined in Section 2C of the staff report.
There's a second from Counselor Cassidy Sanchez. Is there a discussion of this motion? If there's no discussion, could the clerk please call the roll on this motion?
Counselor Rivera?
No, because of lack of process.
Counselor Romero Worth?
Yes.
Counselor Vihil Coptler?
Yes.
Counselor Villarreal?
Yes.
Counselor Beto?
Yes.
Counselor Cassidy Sanchez?
Yes.
Counselor Garcia?
Yes.
Counselor Lindell?
Yes.
Mayor Weber?
Yes.
Motion has been approved.
And that brings us to the third case, and the, either discussion or a motion to take action on that case.
Mayor?
Counselor Romero Worth?
I move to approve the rezoning request for R3 residential, three-dwelling units per acre to R6 residential, six-dwelling units per acre for 4702 Rafina Street, and to adopt the findings of the Planning Commission as outlined in 2D of the staff report.
Is there a second? Counselor Vihil Coptler has seconded the motion. Is there discussion of this motion? If there is no further discussion, could the clerk please call the roll on the motion?
Counselor Romero Worth?
Yes.
Counselor Vihil Coptler?
Yes.
Counselor Villarreal?
Yes.
Counselor Beto?
Yes.
Counselor Cassidy Sanchez?
Yes.
Counselor Garcia?
Yes.
Counselor Lindell?
Yes.
Counselor Rivera?
No, lack of proper process.
Mayor Weber?
Yes.
Motion has been approved.
So, Ms. Pias, are we, we are going to withhold voting on a, any of the findings of fact until they're drafted and brought back at another council hearing? Is that what I understand?
Thank you, Mayor Weber, members of the council. We will draft findings of fact and conclusions of law for all three cases and present them for your approval at a subsequent hearing.
Okay, so that completes the hearings. Item number nine on the agenda is communications from the governing body. Thank you, applicants, for being here. You're now free to go, and appreciate your time and your presentation, as well as the staff work. Counselor, Councilwoman Villarreal, communications from the governing body.
I have none. Thank you.
Counselor Garcia, communications from the governing body.
I just want to give a quick shout-out to Counselor Lindell and Counselor Romero Worth for the dog park video that I saw earlier today. Great production, and I assume Joe was in charge of that too, but awesome, awesome video. That's it, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Vihil Coptler, you have the floor.
Thank you. My dog, Socks, he's raring to go to that new dog park. Both counselors, thank you.
What kind of dog is that, please?
He's a chweenie.
Nice. Thank you for sharing.
Yeah, here he is. Say hi.
Hi, Socks. Counselor Lindell, you have the floor.
I don't really have anything this evening, other than come on over to the dog park. It's so fun. That park gets a tremendous amount of use, and, you know, we have everything from a Irish wolfhound over there that looks like a pony to a dog the size of Socks, and everybody has a great time, and dog parks are an amazing way to build community. People get to know each other, dogs get to know each other, and it's just really, really fun. That's a busy dog park. It's fenced, for those of us that have dogs that have not gained proficiency in the recall command. So come on over, and it's a lot of fun. Thank you to Joe for the wonderful, wonderful video that he did, and our donors on that park, Alex Carr and Elvis Duran. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Romero Worth, you have the floor.
I don't have anything, Mayor, except everybody, please get out and vote. And we've got really bad virus spikes, so it's important to social distance, wear your masks, stay home, buckle down. Good night.
Thank you. Counselor Rivera, you have the floor.
I've already said a bunch, Mayor. I have nothing else. Thank you very much.
Okay. Counselor Cassidy Sanchez, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. I just, I want to echo Counselor Romero Worth's sentiments about virus spiking right now. Stay home. Don't, you know, don't go do things that you don't need to do. Wear your masks. Get outside a lot, because it's a safe place to be, where we can really be enjoying the nice weather while we've got it, and get ready for a tough fall, and get your flu shot also, because that will help with making sure that we are not cramming hospitals with other viruses and not being sure which, which is coming up. So please, everybody, just be safe. Wash your hands a lot. That's all.
Thank you. Counselor Abeta, you have the floor.
No, thanks. Okay. I second all of my colleagues talking about the spike. It's very disturbing. It's very serious. We have the personal responsibility and the authority and the opportunity to really bend the curve again. There will be enforcement, but enforcement only goes so far. It really is up to each of us to make a difference. I really believe, and Counselor Abeta has taken the lead on the, with some of the folks on the South Side, with Counselor Rivera, young people can make a huge difference in keeping your family safe. Make sure the older people, who are more vulnerable, who may have pre-existing conditions, if you're a young member of the Santa Fe community, you can be a leader on public safety and public health. Get a shot, get that flu shot, and if you're eligible to vote, exercise the responsibility of being a, exercise the responsibility. Counselor, that's unfair. I'm trying to exercise the responsibility that comes with democracy. I think you have something you're introducing us to, Counselor Vihil Coptler. Thank you for sharing your, your pet reminder. Thank you, everybody, for a very productive evening, and it is 8:07. And unless there's anything else to be said tonight, we stand.